Ben. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting of August 13th, 2024. Standing as you are able, I'd like to, the group, to do the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Tim. Who's closest to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A member of the public can make a comment at this time. I'm going to ask our Recording Secretary, Betty Yonkey. There is nothing, so we can skip all the way down to a response to previous public comment. I did want to speak very, very, very briefly about our student who spoke at the last meeting, Ashley Seacrest. I did speak with her and her mother afterwards, and I was just so delighted to hear a student speak. She kept it without notes to three minutes, offered two practical suggestions, and sat down promptly with, just before the alarm went off. So that's the way all, all public comments should go, right? That's really all I had to say. I'm kind of hanging. Part of my agenda is cut off. We're at the revisions or approval of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted, and the order can be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. Agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Gerby.
And support Stubben.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have seven tonight? Oh, good. You shimmered into the room, Susan. I didn't see. Good. Shimmered in. I didn't see you at first. I thought you, in fact, were missing. That's great. So we have several action items this evening. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Compensation Committee of an adjustment to the annual salary increase in Superintendent Lotz's contract from 2% to 3% effective July 1st, 2024. And if I could have that motion moved.
Motion, Miller.
Jennifer J. Miller.
Support Stubben.
J. Stubben. And we'll go into the discussion if you don't mind. I just have a few notes about it. The Compensation Committee is here this evening. So basically, based on recent revisions to the revised school code that went into effect on July 1st, they removed the option of highly effective rating for superintendents and administrators. It's just effective now. Dr. Lotz's contract originally hinged upon him reaching the highly effective level, which would have been an automatic increase. So since we don't have that anymore, the Compensation Committee has decided that we would like to give him an increase in salary at this point from 2% to 3%, which is still well under the 4% for certified staff for teachers. So, which is, which is set at 4%. And that's basically all of my notes, but the Compensation Committee, made up of Gerby, Stubben, and myself, will be happy to answer questions from anyone at the table. And if there are no questions.
Oh, there's definitely questions.
Susan, thank you.
So for this item and the next item, I didn't see any, like, like the Thrun information for the next one, and then the actual contract with that change. So I'm just curious, because this is the first time hearing from the Compensation Committee. I'm just curious about how you all came to that. What came to that recommendation? And, like I said, the, the language that we're adding, are we taking anything out? I'm, yeah, just would like more.
Are you talking, are you jumping ahead to the second issue?
No, no, the first one as well.
There's no language change except a number change. So, and his annual salary increase is 2%. And originally, it was going to be based on, which is, in fact, I'll let Brad answer that part.
So originally, Dr. Lotz's contract was written with something called NSI. I think it's Normal Salary Increase. And what it is, is the NSI, he had two tiers, basically, in his contract. One for if he was highly effective, he got the avera- I, again, the language is in the contract. This was the average of X-18 school districts or some number like that. And then he got, if he was effective, he got whatever, like, the standard increase was. You have it exactly? Okay, do you want to? So, anyway, so, long story short, Jennifer's going to give the exact numbers to you, because she's got it up right now, and she's always has that right at her fingers, which has been nice. But like, when we met as a committee, it was a little bit of a challenge, because, you know, he cannot attain the highly effective NSI number anymore because of the state making the change to how evaluations were done. And so when we had a conversation about, then how do we recognize his performance and recognize him, we were, this seemed reasonable to us. So that's, that's kind of how it all came about, but the exact numbers, if you don't mind sharing them.
I can read the passage. So this is, his contract dated June 9th, 2021, signed by he and I. In the area Normal Salary Increases, the superintendent shall receive the Normal Salary Increases NSI as allowed by the Michigan Office of Retirement Services, ORS, for the job classification of superintendent for the first two years of the agreement. If the superintendent is rated as effective in the annual evaluation by the Board of Education, the base salary NSI for the following year shall be increased by the average salary increase for the school districts with a payroll of over $20 million. If the superintendent is rated as highly effective in the annual evaluation by the Board of Education, the base salary NSI for the following year shall be increased by the allowable salary increase for the school districts with a payroll of over $20 million. In years three, four, and five, the superintendent shall receive an increase of 3% if rated highly effective and 2% if rated effective by the Board of Education.
So.
I hope that helped a little.
So if we're changing the, you said the, so we're not just changing the number? Are we keeping the rest of that?
So what I, how I read it is, I'm reading it now that the last sentence, where it says, "In years three, four, and five, the superintendent shall receive an increase of 3% if rated highly effective and 2% if rated as effective," I would say that we would just make that 3% if effective. That would be the contract.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, and I think, Michael, you had the follow-up from the Compensation Meeting, because we were going to see if there was an addendum that was needed or if it would modify the contract itself.
We would just modify, we would modify the contract itself, but the appeal process part is for later. That would, that could be wherever it's supposed to go, addendum or otherwise. So no, there wouldn't be an addendum. It would just be a change to the language of the contract, which is why we're bringing it to the board tonight.
Could you, could you remind me what year we're in of how many-year contract?
He's going into your, he's going into his fourth year.
So this would be valid for the next two years?
Correct.
And the only, it basically now goes from, like, there's not a whole lot of ways to reward excellence versus effective now, correct? Like, this is, this is like.
The way.
Yeah, the way. Okay.
I'd, I'd add too, NSI has now been deemed illegal from the Supreme Court. So now district superintendents, assistant superintendents need to go back, create a salary schedule like our teachers have, so that you can show normal salary increases like steps you would find on a teacher's scale. And then what's happening now, though, is retired superintendents and assistant superintendents are sort of fighting that out with ORS now, because they're not recognizing their previous raises that were deemed illegal through NSI. It's really complex, but that's what's happening.
And if Carol wants to say anything, feel free to chime in. This was obviously legal at the time, just to make sure. We say, and it was in collaboration with Kurt Ellis, who was in the, the role for HR for the district at the time.
So, so if NSI is, like, the language that you just read, Trustee Stubben, is that going to be taken out, the NSI piece?
It's already passed, you know what I mean? So we've already lived through that portion of the contract. So I guess my thought is I wouldn't amend something that was from the past. If you want to strike it, I suppose you can, but.
No, I just, I mean.
We've already been there. This, this, we're specifically talking about the last sentence now. "In years three, four, and five, the superintendent shall receive an increase of 3% if rated as highly effective and 2% if rated as effective by the Board of Education." And I'll even go so far as to say, number one, I don't think, like, I think this 3% is appropriate, because that's the highest level he can attain now. And then the second thing is, I, I think we have an outstanding superintendent, who a 3% rate, you know, number, I think the Compensation Committee thought, was a reasonable increase for a good superintendent. So.
In, in addition, the numbers over the past few years have essentially borderline been highly effective.
But Trustee, if I think you're, you're asking, does more than just the number need to change in this contract language? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, I wasn't talking about whether we choose that number or not.
Okay, I, yeah. So, trying to hear you. I think that what happens is if we do just change the number and there's NSI language lingering behind, Dr. Lotz's lawyers will weed that out or Carol Digglio will, in her, oh, wait, wait.
I, I would love that also. And, and if you have a recommendation on whether we alter the original contract, which was kind of the takeaway from the meeting, or if we do an addendum.
I think I should state what, I was on a call with ORS today, and what their, what the legal team from MASA is recommending is that every superintendent, every assistant superintendent, there is a salary schedule created for the life of their contract that is inserted as an addendum on a consent agenda at a future meeting. That was the recommendation. So in the case of my contract, that's five years, they are recommending that you would go back and state, "This is what the compensation was in year one, year two, year three, year four, and five," and put it into the contract. And then therefore, the recommendation that we would do the same thing for the assistant superintendent positions, because those are people that are in a bargaining group of less than three. So we would do the same thing for Miranda. We'd do the same thing for Carol in this case. That's the recommendation of the call that I was on today.
Yes, that is 380, 124B, 1Q, exactly that, to amend the contract. Well said, Dr. Lotz.
I know you didn't, I know you didn't expect to be up there, but just on the off chance that we have any more questions, could you hover about?
Sure. Yep.
Yeah, just since we didn't have it in front of us, that's really helpful, you all explaining everything and clarifying.
Thank you. Well, then, hearing no further discussion, I'd like to put this to a vote at this time. All in favor of accepting this recommendation of the Compensation Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. And thank you very much. The second item is that we were also told that if we had, had we not, thank you very much, Carol. You don't have to hover anymore, I guess, but had we not, had we changed the contract prior to July 1st, we would not have had to include the following language. The legislation says, basically, that we need to include an appeal language into the contract. And they, our lawyers, Trune, recommended the following language. So let me, before we start talking about this, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Compensation Committee. The following language be inserted as an addendum into Superintendent Lotz's contract as recommended by Trune Legal Services to comply with changes to Michigan Compiled Law 380.1249B, amended. And I could read the whole thing. Basically, it is a statement about an appeals process, and we're, we're not here to debate the language, but just to include the entire thing in his contract. Do I have a motion to, do I have a motion?
So moved. Gold.
Gold. Thank you very much, Lauren.
Support Stubben.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion questions? And by the way, I did want to note that, thank you very much, Carol was on my list. It was on Carol's list, but she managed to get to the lawyers before I did and got this language from them. So thank you so much for your timely response there. And it's word for word what they recommend.
So, same question. There's no other changes that are going to happen? As far as, like, a current appeal process, this language will just be popped in the contract?
Popped in either as an addendum or in an appropriate place in the contract, where it makes sense.
Okay, so there's no current language that will, would be contradicted that or anything?
I don't believe there's an appeal process language in the contract at this point. And the, the odds of us ever needing this would be slim. However, I'm thinking more, we are all thinking in terms of the next superintendent or two or three superintendents down the line, when an appeal must be made if that person receives an unsatisfactory, perhaps. So, but thank you.
Yeah, it's now required, so.
Good question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, hearing no other, assuming no other discussion, I'd like to put this to a vote, please. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, unless there was more. Opposed? All right, hearing none, 7-0. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next part. Oh, this would be yours, Secretary Miller. Motion to approve the minutes from the July 9th closed session for the purpose of Superintendent Evaluation, Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
So moved.
Oh, thank you. I forgot about.
Support.
Tim Austin, and Susan East, I made this motion. I have been swimming slowly up through the summer to reality. You know how it goes, and I hope. For those of you new to this process, we, this, because it was a closed session meeting, not open to the public, so too, the minutes are not open to the public. Best minutes ever. Now that we've had a chance to review the minutes, and they've all been returned to the secretary, please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Hearing no objections?
She's an abstention.
I think I'm abstention, because I wasn't there. I don't know, because I will be doing the minutes if you're not there.
Ordinarily not, or you can, or, or you can vote in favor of it because you trust your colleagues.
It had, yeah. No, it has been, it, so it has been practiced, but it's your choice if you feel confident. But typically, on this board in the last few years, people have abstained if they weren't there, but it's up to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I was on one board recently where I did that same abstention, because I wasn't at the meeting, and was, they looked at me with shock and horror that I would bear, dare that to, to not trust my colleagues. Section D, please. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of 90 Epson DC-30 document cameras from Inacom TSG in the amount of $37,620, as recommended by Jay Grossman, Director of Technology. And this item, by the way, was bid through the Remse Corporation. Do we have a motion?
Support, or, sorry, motion, Miller.
Thank you.
Support Gerby.
Support Gerby. And I understand Mr. Grossman is hovering about. I'm not sure if you have anything to add or comment on this. Do we have any questions for Mr. Grossman? My question was rather a simple one. Do we still use these document cameras? Because I remember them from the olden days in the classroom, and the answer was.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're awesome. Every, every elementary teacher.
And the ones that we have now are old-timey VGA models, as opposed to HDMI, that you're purchasing.
With the standardization of the Classroom Project we're doing, everything's going HDMI. And so these document cameras that have been there for eight and 10 years no longer will work with what we have. So as part of the bond, we had also factored in getting document cameras for everyone to replace that.
Fantastic. Any questions? Nope.
When, when will teachers, when will teachers find these in their rooms?
I am ordering them as soon as we get out of here, and so as soon as I can get them in.
Awesome. Great. So look forward to it.
Just going to hit send. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, opposed? Okay, all in favor. Thank you very much, 7-0. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Order away.
Well, there's another thing you want to see. You might have to hit send twice tonight. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an increase to the original award of $70,263 to Turnkey Network Solutions, which had been approved February 2023 by $44,760 due to changes required by DTE as recommended by Jay Grossman, Director of Technology. Do we have a motion for this?
So moved.
That, Tim Austin, thank you.
Support Eastep.
Thank you. Trustee Eastep. I have no questions. We have one.
How does this fall in line with the original budget? Are we still, yeah. Was that your question, Brad?
That was the question.
Yes, so we're still within budget. There's contingency in, so for this project, it's still within that. And then I packed just a little bit more, just in case there are any other unforeseen circumstances. Again, DTE, after this whole process was done, has come through, and they have the final say on what we can use and not. And so, but we are still within budget.
Great, that's good to hear. Thanks.
Jay, maybe explain, though, that I thought this was interesting, that they, you know, they sometimes approve things that, in our original plan, and sometimes don't as it relates to how they can run by a poll. And I just thought this whole process was sort of.
So when we designed this, we went with best intentions, and myself and Turnkey put forth our, our map of how we want to run the path to be least expensive and the easiest to get through. We did that looking at the polls, making assessments that, hopefully, there'd be enough room on these polls to go through, but because DTE actually owns the telephone poles we're putting them on, they have the final say. And what it came out to is, some of the polls have so many things already on them that they won't let us add our fiber line on there. So for all of those polls, we then have to start going underground, which is, of course, much more expensive and adds to it. And it's not even just like it was one poll or a section of polls. It was a poll here, then they were okay with a couple polls, and declined a couple more. And I included the pictures for you guys to look at on there as well.
Saw the pictures, and it was fascinating, fascinating to watch that.
Fortunately, we're held by them. And of course, this would also fall in line with the bid in that any, anyone we would have approved for this would have been subject to this. So this still ends up being the low bid with going with Turnkey.
Excellent. I don't think there are any other questions. Would like to put it to a vote, please. All in favor of this adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor then? Thank you very much. Mr. Grossman, let me just see. Are you on the agenda for anything else? No, apparently not.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve district changes to Policy 1230.01, Administrative Guidelines, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
So moves, Stubben.
Support Eastep.
Thank, you sounded cautious about that. You say that with authority? Oh, you're reaching for the mic. Sorry, thank you. Are there any questions to ask of the Policy Committee regarding this particular policy? Oh, yes, ma'am.
I just want to make a comment that I appreciate, that this is helping other policies become clearer around the administrative guidelines, because there's multiple ones out there. And so I appreciate, you know, the work that you all did, you know, clarifying it and making sure it's up to date, instead of a paper document, that it's accessible to people online. So, thanks.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, that I just want to commend Dr. Lotz, because he didn't wait for us to, you know, for Neola to make this recommendation, and he was very, he listened to, to the voices around him and to the community and responded in a way that leads with transparency. So I just want to commend that.
What a great phrase. Thank you so much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. 7-0. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Neola Updates to Policy 8800, Religious/Patriotic Ceremonies and Observances, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
I'd like to move to amend the policy 8800.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure if we need to have the policy.
You make a motion to discuss.
The motion first, and then you want to amend the motion.
Okay.
Can't there just be discussions, since it's, yeah, just in general, right?
No, there, there has to be a motion.
After we have a motion on the table, on the floor, let's just have a motion on the floor first and then discuss away.
I think we make a motion, then open it, then discuss it, then amend it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to talk about it until we have a motion on the table. So, so let's do that first.
So I'll, I'll open the discussion. So I support, or motion Gerby.
You've moved, BG has moved.
Up.
Oh, go ahead.
Support Eastep.
Thank you. So, let's dig into a little discussion about this. And the particular concern, you had made, you had sent to the, to the board a suggestion on an insertion of some language, correct?
Yeah, and I kind of brought it up briefly at the last meeting, when we, the first reading of it. Basically, the Patriotic Activities and Observations, the first paragraph in that, I would like to strike the spot that says, "In which students recite the Pledge of Allegiance." So basically, "The United States flag shall also be displayed in every classroom in instructional site." That'd be the end of that. And then also, "When displaying the American flag or other flags, the size of the American flag should be larger than other flags or equal to the size of the largest flag." the size of the American flag should be larger than other flags or equal to the size of the largest flag displayed." That's the language I'd like to add into that first paragraph.
And that is in alignment with the research that Tim sent to us, the link that had the specifications for displaying flag.
I, I support this all the way, and I hope you don't mind me jumping in.
Let's carry on with the discussion.
So, I want to respect the process. All right, so I, I agree with this entirely. I don't know if I would strike the last sentence. I might more favor it just, it's inclusion. And the only reason for that is because there is some funding with the state that is tied to, like, saying the Pledge of Allegiance on a daily basis in our classrooms.
He, he's not suggesting that we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance. He's suggesting that there are flags in every space, whether the Pledge of Allegiance is set or not.
Oh, and I'm all on board with that. I just, I might want to put your language in addition, is my point.
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak for you.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I thought I heard you say, "Strike" the last line.
Well, we're gonna strike. So if you read the last, that sentence, it says, sentence, it says, "A United States flag shall also be displayed in every classroom or other instructional site." It used to say, "In which students recite the Pledge of Allegiance."
Right.
I want to strike the part that it says, "In which students recite the Pledge of Allegiance", basically stating then that the United States flag shall also be displayed in every classroom or other instructional site.
Well, two, those two things could work in congruence together, though, couldn't they?
No. Like in our, yeah, so in our previous discussion, we discussed that there are some classrooms that don't have a first hour, don't meet at the beginning of the day. And so therefore, there doesn't, according to this policy, there would not have to be a flag displayed in that site. So Tim's not suggesting that we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to speak for you, that we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance. He is suggesting that he would, that he would like to strike that so that it reads that it, flags are displayed at every instructional site.
And you know, and that's fine, because I'm even reading the next paragraph, that all students in attendance at school are provided an opportunity to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, that works.
Yeah, so it doesn't discuss that.
Yeah, yeah, we're fine. I didn't want to, we're good, yep.
I did have a concern that I expressed to Tim earlier, that this is the, the aspect of the flag being larger than other flags. It's, it's a point of etiquette as opposed to law of the land. And that being the case, there are other etiquette issues that can be addressed as well. But I, I worry about burdening a, a policy like this, especially with, somebody needs to enforce such things. But I think it probably won't be so much of an issue with the flag size because really, almost every pole in this school, in this district, only flies the American flag. I don't believe we flag, regularly fly the State of Michigan flag, or a POW flag, or anything else. Except for in extraordinarily rare situations where we have a visitor from another country.
There are, though. I'm just thinking of a few spaces, like the Commons area, for example. There are a number of flags from other countries. In classrooms, sometimes there are flags displayed. And so this would be a nice addendum to the policy to make sure that we are, you know, adhering with.
But this is regarding, I'm sorry.
Etiquette of.
It's inside and outside, Michael.
Yeah, yeah.
Did it say inside and outside?
Yes. No, it doesn't distinguish.
It does not distinguish.
So it would be inside and outside.
Yep. But it says above each public school building, which to me says out, suggests outside.
The above.
And then it's new sentence.
I think you read the whole thing. Thank you.
So, when I was thinking about this, I was wondering what if there were, like, I know that there are teachers who have big Celine banners up, but I think that those are banners and not flags. And so then I went down the whole deep dive of how you define a flag versus a banner, because I would, like, hate to, if somebody has, like, a Celine Hornets banner in their class. So I think that the distinction for the people who are going to have to enforce this is that the flag would be at a certain angle on a pole, such as we see here, right? And that banners are held at a 90-degree angle. I went down this whole thing. Just because there are, like, if you think about, like, there's Michigan banners, like, some teachers have. And so there's, like, Celine Hornets banners that could be bigger than the size of the flag, so.
But I guess if a flag is something we're reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to, those aren't.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, that's what I'm saying.
Actually, this is a perfect example here. We got the American flag, and then the Michigan flag here, and the American flag is smaller than the Michigan flag. Where's, oh, out in the other room.
But, but, okay, so I'll, I'll just throw another curveball for whatever it's worth. But I know in some spaces, like, for example, in the Nattorium, it's not on a pole. It's flat against the wall. But it is larger than any other potential flag. But again, banners such as, like, state titles and et cetera, et cetera, would be larger. But are those flags? I would argue that they're not, but, yeah.
I was just thinking that it has the possibility, it has very good intentions, and I certainly have no issue at all with the American flag being bigger than, if a Spanish teacher has a, the flag, the American flag should be the biggest. I'm completely comfortable with that. But defining what is a flag versus what is a banner versus what, I don't know, you know, like, what, that, that could become difficult to enforce. If we're only thinking of flags as, like, flags representing a government or a nation-state, I mean, I don't know. You might, it's just something to think about.
I'm, I'm just, so in reference with the policy, there's the MCL. I always like to go to those court cases or those law that's referenced within the Neola policies, because that's how they've come to this policy recommendations or requirement for us. And so the MCL, let me see, just real quick, 380.1347 actually uses similar language about the sizing of the flag. The, you know, details as far as on a public school be, building, and then that it should be up, you know, during all school hours. And then it, it also says that it should be displayed in each classroom or other instructional site in which pupils recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So that's all consistent with our current policy. As far as the sizing and things like that being bigger than whatever else, I'm, I'm not sure where that comes from in regards to, like, this law or, so.
Yep. Think, this is why I mentioned that it's from an etiquette side as opposed to from MCL.
In, in the MCL, I mean, I think they went wrong when they added the language in which pupils recite the Pledge of Allegiance. That's why I want to get rid of that part. So, and then as far as the, the etiquette, when we were talking about the size of the flag, and yes, that is referenced, like Susan said, in the Senate bill. But when we were citing that, then I was thinking of flag, flag etiquette, and I would just like to see that, that.
Well, I appreciate that. I think we discussed the heck out of this at this point, and I appreciate you bringing it up. It sounded like, from my sense of the board, that we're ready to move. And when this clip on YouTube becomes viral because the vexology community, the study of flags, wants to weigh in on it, it'll be because of this when we get 5,000 hits tomorrow. All.
Michael, I, I'm just curious.
Are you not quite ready?
I'm not. Just because I, I mean, my issue isn't with the American flag being the biggest flag in the classrooms. I'm fine with Trustee Austin's, but just how, like, if we're adding language to the policy, like, how would it be enforced? How, how do we see that happening? I guess that, that was my bigger issue of, like, the flag. And then also, just the question of instructional, I, I'm wondering if the reason they brought that up is that kids go off-site for instruction? Like, if you're going to the cosmetology centers, do we then provide, I mean, I'm just trying to think of for what reason they would have added the Pledge of Allegiance language? And I wonder if there was some reason for it that we haven't considered? Like, I'm wondering if we should research this stuff and take this back to the Policy Committee if we feel strongly about adding the amendment, so we can understand better why, how it would be enforced and, you know, and why that language regarding the Pledge of Allegiance was added? Like, is, it seems like maybe they added that language for some reason, but I don't know why.
Or, or because maybe some schools may not have them in all the classrooms, and if they're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, they, they need to have them in there, so that.
So is it like a cost thing where they only can afford to buy? Was that what you're wondering?
Well, I think in Celine, after this was done, there was a fundraiser, and somebody donated, a Girl Scouts. Okay, they donate a lot of flags.
I guess what.
Oh, sorry. I was also going to say, one of the things that, you know, kind of perks my ears when we're talking about policy is when we are talking or discerning enforcement. Typically, that happens through administrative guidelines. So Steve could potentially answer that, or he could then work with True or Neola to develop administrative guidelines for the enforcement. So ours is to set the policy and what we'd like to see happening, and theirs is, Steve's is to consider the enforcement of the policy. Although, of course, we don't want to create policy that can't be enforced, obviously. Or, yeah, would be impossible to enforce. So maybe if Steve has anything that he'd like to say about that, then that could help us to make a decision.
I mean, just thinking how we probably would handle that is just have somebody go around and do an inventory of all our rooms and see which, I don't know, 10 classrooms either don't have a flag or have a flag that's smaller than the other flags.
Yeah, the only one I can think of is our, our compass flag, because I have one at my house right now, because for traveling. It's big. It's, it's bigger than that, for sure. So that would just be the only thing to, to kind of think about.
So to piggyback on, on Lauren, I would, Dr. Gold, I would say that I've always been like the person of clean copy here, too. And so I have no problem amending it and including that language, like, none whatsoever. But I, I think it would be wise of us to leave ourselves enough space to allow it to come back to us after we do our due diligence. Like, so I guess what I'm saying is I would table it for tonight and then bring it back on the 27th with that language included. That would be my, my inclination, just to make sure we're buttoned up on some of those kinds of things and how we would enforce it, et cetera.
Brad, are you recommending that, first of all, you're withdrawing your, your, your motion?
So I would actually accept the amend, the amendment. So I don't know if I can do that part to my motion. So I would accept the amendment to, to the motion, and I would ask that the amended motion be tabled until August 28th.
What, what, what are you asking to have happen, though, I guess, specifically before the next meeting?
I would just want us to do our due diligence about the language on the striking of the words, you know, but the, what was the exact words on the pledge, or whatever those three words were.
In which the students recite.
In which the students recite the pledge. I just want to make sure that we're not then going to be not compliant with either whether it's funding, like I talked about earlier, or it could create some kind of, you know, issue for enforcement. That way, we just do our homework a little bit more on it.
Oh, absolutely. I guess as the Policy Chair, I'm asking, like, if you're asking for it to come back to the Policy Committee, that we would be meeting that night. So I'm not sure who you're asking or directing to do that work.
Who we is also, who are the we who are doing the due diligence?
I think we being our administrative teams and the people that advise us about the questions we have right now, right? Because we have some questions about, in our classrooms, how feasible is this? And how, right, like, how ready are we to enforce this from day one?
So let me, so let me ask, are you asking for us to double-check with Neola on the language? And then Steve can double-check with, like, buildings and grounds on the expense?
I think that'd be wise.
Okay, those two are, are what you're asking. So we can check with Melody, and we can perhaps check with Rex.
Right, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing, if with.
I know, Rex is trying not to go.
Honestly, Rex, if it's not August, if it's not August, it's fine. We can, we can, we can move this.
We actually do have a hand up, and I have a question to ask Trustee Eastep.
Yes, so I was looking at, just real quick while we're talking, and it may be good to take it back possibly to the Committee, but I was looking at the U.S. Code Title IV, Chapter 1, Section 7, which is referenced, and there is nothing about the size of the flag being large. I believe that's in the book, maybe, that's referenced as far as the care and display of the American flag, but it's not in the actual U.S. Code. So we might want to explore that component.
This, this is, this was brought up last, at the last discussion, and the recommendation was to strike the numbers, but the Committee, or the Board as a whole, seemed, felt more comfortable leaving the numbers.
I think Susan's talking about the code, flag code does not necessarily specifically state when displaying the American flag or other flags, the size of the American flag should be larger than the other flags or equal.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the dimensions that are listed.
That is more etiquette through, like, the legion and so forth.
I thought you were referencing the specific dimensions that were listed.
So, I'm hearing a motion to table this until a future meeting, perhaps once the Policy Committee, or when, no, when I've heard then the Administration has decided, or has done some due diligence, and we've done some further investigation. Is that what I'm hearing?
And I'm happy to email Melody if that takes something off the plate of the Administration, and then they can perhaps answer the other questions. And like I said, I know August is busy, so we can, the Policy Meeting doesn't, the Policy Committee doesn't even meet until the day of the next Board Meeting, so perhaps it could be pushed into September, or when it's ready.
Do I have support to Brad's amendment to, or to his motion to table this?
Can I just, so I think Tim made the original motion, not Brad?
No, no, Brad made, Brad made a motion to table.
And then Susan supported.
No, Brad made a motion to table this during our discussion.
Right, but Tim, the motion on the floor is from Tim.
There's no motion from Tim.
Brad made a motion. Susan seconded it. Tim proposed an amendment. Yeah. And now we're going back to Brad, to his original motion, and he's asking to table his motion. And Susan would then, I guess, we would ask her if she's going to table her motion.
If she'd like to, I'd support that. Brad, are you moving to table that? We've moved to table this motion. Are you seconding it again, Susan?
I second and support, and.
Right. And now, we've had discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, opposed? Okay, so this is being tabled with all of the stuff we talked about. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Policy 6350, prevailing wage coordinator as recommended by the Policy Committee. Please.
Motion, Miller.
Thank you.
Gerby, support.
Thank you. I don't think there's any discussion. It was pretty clear. Looking around the table.
Rex, we just keep piling on.
Congratulations. Wait, wait, he's, he's not until we vote on it. Wait, wait for it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rex says, opposed. Thank you, subcontractor issues. Thank you very much, seven zero. I appreciate this. Thank you. We'll move on. We have a one scheduled, brief scheduled report from Superintendent Lott regarding the handbook review. Who's pitching in for Laura Washington this evening? Thank you.
Yeah, happy birthday to Mia.
I know, she's so sweet.
Yay, Mia.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And Ben, you'll click for me? Okay, so this is our, sort of an annual handbook review that we are trying to make sure that the Board of Education is familiar with updates and changes that go into the student handbook, and we'll report out some of those changes. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, so, but at first, we're going to go back and talk about sort of the purpose of student handbooks and how they connect to policy and so forth. So the first part is why refer to the handbooks. It's expectations and guidance for the learning community, both students and families that, that would look at it. Looks at district and building mission and vision statements, district and building operations, codes of conduct, and programming. And there's a number of examples of programming that are listed there. Go to the next one, Ben. Handbook review process. So this is what the building, primary of the building principles and some assistant principles do as they review the handbook. So in May and June, May or June, they get feedback from community stakeholders, and sometimes those stakeholders are all of you. You might suggest something that they need to look at that comes up in, in policy. For example, there were some things in the dress, dress code that people suggested that, hey, we need to look at that when we review student handbooks. So then I would take that information and pass it on to, in this case, Laura Washington, because she helps sort of chair this work. And then we look at that feedback. And then changes and updates in policies and procedures occur. Updating language, personnel shifts, and keeping everything current. Because some personnel shifts, sometimes we'll have something listed in there. That's somebody who doesn't work here anymore, or we. or we have to change a title for somebody who is going to be involved in that, and so we do that then. A review of data and needs from the past year, and that, it's important to note, there's two different ways we approach the handbook. Sort of the young five through fifth grade, because we look at that as, well, what's developmentally appropriate for that range? And then what's developmentally appropriate for the sixth through 12th grade work? And we divide those up into work groups. Now, something that's fairly recent over the course of the last couple of years is an athletic extracurricular work group, because they also have handbooks that more or less supplement the general building handbooks. And that's something that's relatively new. And then in June and July, they now have finalized the language, and that we would move it forward to report on the updates, or to update for all of you, and that it is important to note that the handbook is not a stagnant document. And I'll give you an example of what's happening right now. There's a lot of changes to Title IX going on right now, and that seems to be changing monthly. So even though we're going to put in those updates as soon as we can, if something significant changes in the next several months, they'll just go in and update it. I mean, generally, they're trying to update them once a year. But if we're talking about something that's put into law that needs to be updated, they would do it mid-year, or, you know, three months into the school year. Okay, so we go to the next one. So here's how they're similar at each level, so they do look at it as, regardless of whether this is a parent who's got a young five student or a, or a 12th grader, it's a source for both building and district information. There's codes of conduct throughout all of the handbooks at any level. Programming, how we do business, we're trying to become more consistent with how we do business, that's the purpose of the handbook. Contains a lot of useful information, and it is based on board policy with applicable links back to board policy when, when the administrators feel that it is necessary. Go to the next one, Ben. So how are they different? We do look at age appropriateness, developmental needs, and again, we've sort of separated into, well, here's the elementary handbook, and then here's more of the middle and high school handbook. And then we've tried to tailor it specific to building operations. The high school operates just differently than heritage, so we, that's reflected in, and there's probably, there's probably a lot more, there is a lot more that is in the secondary handbook as a result of that. Building logistics to ensure safety and efficiency, expectations and criteria based on activity, developmental age, and other agencies, to provide governance to schools and school activities. I do want to pop back up to that third bullet, though. Building logistics to ensure safety and efficiency. So the district's been putting a lot of time and energy and effort into improving our safety and security. And Jackie and Rex, for example, just ran a all administrative session along with our building administrative assistants on new ways in which we're going to be looking at reunification of, if there was an emergency in one of the buildings, we had to vacate, where would we go? So as those things improve and change, we will continue to update our handbooks accordingly as well. Okay, we go to the next one, Ben. So highlights, in other words, changes that have occurred in the young fives to fifth grade handbooks. We added a guideline for pets at drop-off and pickup. People are saying, well, why is this necessary? It's because we're getting feedback from our parents that at elementary drop-off, sometimes people that are walking their students to school or bringing their pets in their cars and then hopping out, the animals are getting too close to the kids and it's making them feel uncomfortable, so we're actually going to have sort of a designated area that is, is going to be set up by the building principals. Attendance, this is another big one. We're, we're trying to make sure that everyone's getting the message of how important it is to be attending school every day. And you say, well, why is that necessary? Because attendance is an issue, less so in the Celine area of schools than in other districts, but attendance is more of an issue now after the COVID pandemic. There's lots of different reasons. When we, when we first went through the initial phases of the COVID pandemic, we sent a message out to the community that, hey, you know, be very diligent about keeping your kids home from school, if there's any sniffles, that type of thing. Well, that's carried over some, and you could argue, well, that's a good thing, our parents are keeping their kids out of school. Yep, it is, but it's also, we're looking at it as, you know, it's an, it's an attendance issue per se. Also, especially at the secondary level, we're finding that because parents and students have greater access to being able to get their work online through Google Classroom and such at the middle school and high school, that's also seemed to have an impact on attendance as well. And what we're trying to stress in our handbooks is, we really need you in school as much as possible, and we're trying to put even greater emphasis on the importance of being in school. So that's an update for this year. Emphasize that electronic watches are part of the sort of no cellphone policy, that it's, you know, if we're saying no cellphones at, at the elementary levels, kids, that would apply to using their watches as well. And so added that in, and then I already brought this up, that we're linking Title IX policies to the handbooks, and those are evolving, so we'll continue to update those as we go. Okay, next one, Ben, sixth to 12th grade highlights. Updated language around dress code to reflect the Board of Education policy. We spent quite a bit of time over the years on dress code, and we want to make sure that our families and our students and our building principals are going to be working towards making sure everybody understands what the dress code is, enforcing it fairly, and making sure there's no surprises into what we're trying to accomplish here. But also making sure that we are not singling out specific students for wearing things that we don't think is okay, but other kids could wear that, and we're trying to be very sensitive about that. So that's being updated here. There's a disciplinary matrix that's been updated to do, look at the range of student discipline. There was some criticism that previously in the handbook, it would talk about discipline, but it would kind of look at, it was vague about, well, what happens if that's a first offense, or a second offense, or a third? So right now, if you go in there, you'd see that there's three columns in this matrix, and it talks about what happens with the first offense, second offense, third offense, and tries to, well, it is developing more clarity around it. So you, you would see that in there. Also updated the organization for ease of use. There's four sections now, sort of district handbook issues, building specific, the actual student code, student code of conduct, which is very lengthy, and annual notices that occur. We also looked at removing the full text of attendance policy and linked the attendance matters document as well as late arrival and absent form. This is just sort of even beefed up more than the elementary handbook. The attendance issue is a bigger, I mean, it's more frequent at, of an issue at middle and high school than it is at elementary. So we're trying to even stress, this matters that you're coming to school. For consistency, it's important to be in school as much as you can and on time. And then also taking this resolving problems at school section into the parent teacher conferences section. Wonder, well, what's the resolving problems at school? It's basically talking about chain of command, that if there's a problem at school, we want always, it's sort of the bridge to civility, engage directly with the person or the group that you have an issue with. If it's a, for example, if it's a parent that has an issue with a teacher, we would like them to contact the teacher first. Going first to a building principal would not be appropriate, this section talks about that. And then again, the linked Title IX policy is the same as the young fives to fifth grade. Next one, Ben. And this is what we did for athletics, but we did this the previous year, and so there really aren't any changes. This was developed and for the 23, 24 school year, and will continue on this year. And sort of, you know, it, but, but we never had this before, so we do think it's important that the athletic department was tasked at putting together more consistent processes and procedures when they came in, and that's what they've been doing. So this will be basically the second year of implementation. And then, Ben, the next one's extracurricular. Same type of thing, so it was started in 2020, 22, 23, and looked at developing, well, what happens with extracurricular activities, whether that's Science Olympiad or Uproar, or any, any of our clubs and organizations, because Lori Dawson has primarily been managing those. And, you know, at the high school, when you're talking about roughly 100 extracurricular options, there really was not a lot of process and procedure on how to support those, those groups, and therefore they were all doing different things, and now this has really streamlined that into, you know, how do they get support in a building, or what's, what are the field trip procedures? That, that's been a biggie, that we, we are really way more streamlined on how we approve field trips and what the process is even to get that initiated. So now we also look at it from the standpoint, like athletic department drives the handbook content for clubs, activities, and community ed cohesion, so they are working together, so that Ashley and Jeff and Athletics and Lori in extracurricular are talking about how a lot of these activities take place after school, if not all of them. So what does it need to look like so that, you know, athletics are doing the same types of things as it relates to using the facilities that the clubs and organizations are doing? Okay, and so here's something that's new for the next school year. So the administrators have been looking at Trune Law Handbook. They, Trune has put out a handbook template that the administrators have been looking at. So what Laura Washington and her team did this summer was they looked at this template, and their motivation for doing so is this provides more structure of all the things that Trune feels are important to have in a handbook. And because of the fact that there are so many times that we draw back on, well, is this legal? And do we, we, we check with Trune a lot as it relates to handbook-related things, and some policy-related things as well. And so they felt that it was important that we look at this, and they have now said that they would like that template to use for the following school year, and so the district has purchased it. Wasn't that expensive, $900 or something like that, but we have now done that. And then what will happen over the course of this year is that the handbook committee, led by Laura, will look and look to implement the structure of the handbook for the following school year. The structure is more streamlined, it provides, you look down here at that fourth bullet, four specific sections that it's divided into, district-wide policies and procedures, academic, student clubs, activities, and athletics, discipline, and code of conduct, those are the four areas. And therefore, they're going to more or less take what we have now and insert the various parts of the handbook into those sections, and then they're going to make sure that it complies with all the Trune recommendations. But it is, it's a template, meaning we are allowed to make full changes to it as we go. So we're going to, we're going to adjust it to meet our needs versus just taking Trune's handbook and saying, this is now our handbook, that, that really wouldn't work. And they'll tailor it at different levels, again, we'll look at it from the standpoint of, you know, what does this need to look like at the young fives to fifth grade level, and then what does it need to look like at the sixth through 12th grade level? The other thing that was important, if we back up one of their, yeah, so the administrative team will be meeting quarterly throughout the year to make the shift, so they'll start to look at it and then say, okay, you know, we're going to meet a few months into the school year and decide what needs to happen here, and they'll start gradually inserting information so that when I'm here next year at this time, I can say, this is how they're rolling it out for the 25, 26 school year. Okay, Ben, next slide. And then this is just, there's a, if you go to any of our websites, like Celine High School, there's a little red arrow, it's in the same place at every building's website, and there's a little button that says handbooks. And so that's, that's where you would get to it if you went to any of our school sites, which is another thing that we've been working towards, and Jackie's been doing a really good job with this, gaining some like consistency when people go to our websites, so they know where to look. That sometimes, there's so much on these websites that you need to, you need to develop a similar structure on each page so it's not so confusing, and that's what we're trying to do. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have too many questions, I just want to applaud the user experience, at least on that last page, for consistency where to find the thing. Thank you. Questions from the rest of the team? We have one for.
Just a minor thing, Steve, on, on this page, could we possibly add athletics also? Because it lists all of the buildings, including elementary and secondary, but the handbook for athletics isn't on that page. And when you go to the Celine Athletics site, the font, and granted, my eyesight isn't perfect, but the font is like six point or seven point, it's like really small, and it's not a downloadable.
So what you're saying, when you click on the handbooks there, if we included a link for the athletics? Jackie, can you make a note of that? Okay, yes, sounds good.
Yeah, it's just because the, the copy that's on the athletic site goes to a Google Doc, but it's not accessible or downloadable.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
For those with, with some site issues like me, thanks.
Dr. Gold and Brad.
Steve, I was wondering, because we've had a lot of discussion over defining bullying and how that helps us with watching our metrics and discipline, is there a place in the handbook where bullying is spelled out and the definition of bullying is discussed?
There, there is a bullying section, I haven't, I'd have to go there to look at the exact language, but we do feel that it is important that we are defining it, and then making sure that, as it related to that bullying presentation that I had done earlier, that we continue to improve and, and provide more resources for our students and staff as it relates to, I'd say combating it. That's why at the last meeting, when I was talking about that, the importance of the middle school, for example, recognizing that, hey, there are more instances of bullying at the middle school, and therefore we need to be more proactive as a district to address it, and here's how we're going to do that. So we are trying to make sure that we are spending more time educating our students, but that also means educating the community, to your point, too, Lauren. So, yeah, there is a section there, I can't say exactly, having not reviewed it.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I actually watched, even though I wasn't there, I watched that meeting. Yeah, I, I, I'll look at it, because I think that is sort of our number one issue with trying to tackle this problem, which is a big goal of mine, is like, kind of, we all have this feeling, we know it when we see it, but the, having like a community-wide definition that was out in the handbook that everybody looked at in the beginning, maybe going forward, since we're already doing this vision for 25, 26, that would be something, I think it would be interesting to address. It might be well addressed already, I haven't looked at the handbook this year. I have looked in years past for my kids, but I haven't looked at it from a trustee perspective in a while, so I will.
Yeah, and I can make sure to pass all that on to our, our building principals to make sure that they are aware that, you know, we want to make sure that we're being consistent about how we're defining bullying and what we're doing to combat it.
Thank you, Treasurer Kirby.
And mine's a very quick, it says here that the administrative team for this, the Trune handbook is going to meet quarterly throughout the year. You had said that we would maintain some autonomy, meaning that we would be able to personalize our, our handbooks. Are we looking to adopt more of a district-wide view on handbooks? Because you're saying that all of them would meet quarterly as an administrative team? Or would each building still try to have their own personalized handbook as well?
I mean, they're not really personalized in that way, but what I meant is, just like how they're divided up in a young fif, a young five through fifth grade group?
Right.
And sixth through 12th, they'll do that as they review the Trune template four times this year before they settle in on, this is what it looks like.
That's all declared, Annie, thank you.
Trustee Eastep.
Yes, I looked at, at, just, just real quick before I go into what I wanted to say, trustee Lauren, I had looked at a couple of the handbooks earlier, and they're kind of a little inconsistent. And I know something that, and I guess to go into, is that whenever, that our, our handbooks, our administrative guidelines are supposed to be based off of policy, right? I know some of the definitions were kind of pulled from some. policy, right? I know some of the definitions were kind of pulled from somewhere. I don't, you know, I don't know how consistent everything is. You know, I think, I think that's important. You know, we started this when I was policy chair. Neola, there was, you know, student handbooks that were being sent to us, I think annually, with kind of, with the updated laws and policies that, you know, were, were updated through Neola. And so that was reflected consistently in those, you know, those handbooks as, as they're updated, of course, filling in everything. I'm glad that you all have been like, you know, focusing on this and trying to make it more consistent. You know, I think that, that really helps with the consistency and clarity on things. So, what else? Oh, so something that's come up from my constituents. Parents of students who are asked, I think this came up maybe sometime recently, but parents are being asked to fill out the intent to return. And I think in some experience, the handbooks weren't updated quite yet. Whenever parents would file the intent to return, which requires that, requires that you review it and sign off on it, right? And so, you know, I'm hoping that you all can come up with something, the team. I know the summers are like super busy and that's when you can get, you know, time to work on things. So I, you know, I, that's a concern that's come up to me about the handbooks.
Can I ask, is that this year or previously? Because I did ask Laura and she said all the handbooks are updated and they're online. So anybody returning?
They might be, no, yeah, there's some that weren't, but I...
So I'll, I'll get back with Laura on that.
Okay. Whenever I fill out the intent, at least me personally, I waited a bit and it, it had listed the intent to return, that it says that, I believe it stated that it was, they weren't updated or they would be updated later. So, you know, maybe, you know, just maybe an idea of like, we revisit, like we have them sign it maybe in the fall as well or something. Like, I don't know. You all could, you know, work on that. But I, I know that's a concern that, that came up. So I wanted to, to let you all know that.
That's a good point. I want to add on to that too, that what I did talk to Laura about is I said, well, what happens when we revise something mid-year about Title IX, for example? She said, in that case, if there are changes that occur after the school year begins, they would email parents in their weekly updates to say, hey, we just made a change here.
Awesome.
So that people would know, hey, a change has been made. But I also will make sure that those are updated and I'll go back and double check on that.
Yeah, that's super helpful to know, actually, because, you know, it does say that it's a living document and it is, right? So I appreciate that, that came up, that you all can, you know, note that change to the greater district community. And then, so with, I, I just wanted to ask you if you, you know, see any gaps or areas of growth where the district can improve communication and increase clarity and consistency when it comes to the student handbooks. I know one example you gave was, earlier was, you know, hearing something said at the board table and, and having that discussion and maybe changing. So I'm, I'm just curious if, if you've received any feedback or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that's the intent. I mean, we're always trying to improve the way we communicate. I do know that Jackie is doing a very good job of working with our administrative team on, these are some things we can do to make sure that we're being consistent about our messaging and handbooks are included in that. But a lot of it is just getting feedback throughout the year and making sure that that feedback is heard by our administrative team that's reviewing the handbook. And, because I mean, I specifically, like trustee Gold specifically asked, hey, we need to make sure that we are uniformly implementing the, the way, the wording in the dress code so that we're not infringing on certain groups. I'm not saying it exactly that way, but, but I had the language that she had said and I passed it on to Laura and I said, hey, when you review the handbooks, can you please talk about this? And they did. So we do, we do, what I'm saying is we do need the feedback from Board of Ed and the community so that we can pass that on to the, the team that reviews the handbook, so that we can become more consistent and responsive to various needs that may be missing or the language needs clarity and such.
Okay, thanks.
One more?
One, like note to consider as I was looking through some things. And the reason why I think this came to mind was because when we were talking about the updates, I've lost my train of thought with the updates, what was the acronym? The updates to, I'm looking at Carol, the updates to some of the changes with recall. What was that package?
Recall.
Yeah, what was the, yeah, there was a package, a package that came to us that had like an acronym. I can't remember which package in February. Anyway, it had to do with layoff and recall. And in that conversation, Dr. Gold had brought up that attendance policies can sometimes be somewhat exclusive or discriminatory of students with, or teachers with chronic illnesses or family members with chronic illnesses. And so I just took a close look at a couple of the handbooks and their attendance. And I noted, like for example, harvest, it doesn't really say a whole lot. It just says that, you know, attendance is pretty much, it says attendance is expected and it's great and that it's parents' responsibility. But I appreciated in the high school handbook, when it talks about attendance, it does make a note that for reasons of medical impairment accompanied by a medical note or any other similarly excused condition shall be considered. So I, I just wondered if there was a way for the harvest handbook. It just says like attendance is expected and it's a good thing and it's parents' responsibility. And I know perhaps in another place where it talks about, you know, illnesses maybe, it might, but I, I just thought maybe where it, where it reads about attendance, there might be a consideration for, you know, if we're, if we're saying attendance is expected and it's the parents' responsibility, we also should potentially note what the acceptable reasons for staying home might be. And maybe that's spelled out in another section that I didn't see. But I think that could be helpful for parents in discerning or prioritizing attendance and, and when to consider and all, you know, changing a schedule or rescheduling something in alternative. So that was just one note that I just, that, that conversation when Dr. Gold and her experience as a pediatrician, and maybe you can speak more to that, but talked about how sometimes attendance policies can have a negative effect for students who have, you know, historically been marginalized. So.
I can make a note and pass that on to them.
Thank you. Oh, one more?
Just, I wanted to add, because I was thinking a little, a bit, I think Brad mentioned, mentioned something about, you know, the input, not only just the district admin, and you didn't further, you know, like, I, I just wanted, I guess, to piggyback on that, that, you know, I think what we talked about in the dress code about the teachers and staff and the students having input on that. I'm just curious with the handbook teams if that would be helpful to maybe expand that and, and in the sense of like having a teacher, staff, fam, like a community member input or whatever in that process. So I just wanted to put that back on the table because I think it would be, get a whole, whole lot of maybe, you know, responses like, like that, how it may be discriminatory or something in a review of that. So.
Were you thinking, I'm just wanted to clarify, were you thinking in the K-12 survey or were you thinking something?
The handbooks.
Specifically meeting about the handbook. Okay.
Yeah, like, because there's a team that goes, goes over it. I think that would be helpful to...
Yeah, it just made me think that perhaps it could be also included in the K-12 insight survey, like just feedback on, you know.
But as I write this note, to clarify, I think you are referring to the policy related to the dress code and who provides input, right? Or are you talking about just general?
That's an example.
That's an example.
Yeah, that's an example of a specific, specific guideline, right? Or specific piece in the handbook. But I guess overall, I'm talking...
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the robust discussion and thanks very much for the update. I appreciate that. A quick discussion item, a board finance committee update from Brad Kirby.
All right. Finance spent today at five o'clock. We're glad to, to reconvene. And we had a couple of things on our agenda. The biggest one, that thing that's on our mind right now as a finance team, quite frankly, is the 24, 25 budget and how some of the changes with regards to funding will impact us. And so we had some conversations about that. The biggest thing obviously is the change from the state going to a model or increase in the per pupil and moving to doing it in other ways such as reducing the UAAL percentages and some of that kind of thing. And so I will tell you that like, we're actually still kind of figuring out some of this because some of the money hasn't started to flow through to us. And, and how Assistant Superintendent Owsley said some of it may, they work is more like an extra revenue line item, right? Rather than a per pupil increase in the foundation allowance, right, or in our foundation amount. So we're going to kind of see how that all comes to us and how it's earmarked. And then the same thing is going to happen with the 3% healthcare adjustment for, for employees and how that's going to funnel through and then be a reimbursement. Long story short, like what I'm telling you is like, it's a work in progress and it just needs time. But we're on it and it is only August and I have full faith in our, in the team and specifically in Assistant Superintendent Owsley's team and, and we're figuring that out. So that was the first thing. We talked a little bit about some, enrollment is always important to us. And one of the really cool things that we're seeing right now that's, that's a, a good thing is our kindergarten projection looks really solid and really strong for, for this incoming class. We're going to see, we think, a, a bounce back in that regard. And we're even seeing an extra section that we are adding on of young fives. And so from an enrollment standpoint, obviously when we're enrolling more students, that's a, that's a positive thing. So, so yay on that. Again, these are projections. We won't know until we go through our official counts and we'll have count day and we're, you know, give those exact numbers later on into time in October. We should have those numbers. So there's that. The, the third thing that I would have is we, we talked for a minute, we just highlight certain parts of the, the, the budget from time to time. And we highlighted our, about capital projects today and about how we utilize capital project funds. And we talked about just some of the ins and outs. Basically, capital projects is a rainy day fund that we establish for doing large item purchases. Let me give you an example. A couple of, one of the things that we touched on was we are not per, one of the, we are restrictions in our general fund about things we purchase that have a license plate on them for some reason, right? And so when we ordered a dump, when we bought a dump truck for $300,000 a number of years ago, that money came from capital funds or capital projects. So anyway, so we just talked about and just got an update on some of that. And then the last thing is I sent an email to the team, but for the public's knowledge, we are engaging in our annual audit. And our annual audit will tell us the, the truth about our, our funds and everything in that front. And I, as the district department, as the treasurer and, and finance chair, I have to conduct and be a participant in an audit call where I just, they tell me about the process. They tell me that it's going to happen. It's happening now. That our people, you know, are, are participating willingly in that process and that we would finish up that process sometime end of September with that goal in mind or early October. And the last thing, which is always so funny for me, is I have to verify and attest that I do not believe that there is any fraud happening with regards to financial items in the district, which I attested to. So I think that's it. I think that's the update. I continue to be proud of our strong fund balance that we, we have right now. And that, that's a good thing for us in the district. And if there's anybody from the team that wants to add anything, but I think that's it.
I would like to add...
Or questions?
No questions, but thank you for your leadership and keeping up on the minutiae along with Miranda Owsley. You're doing a great job. Thank you. Oh, you have something to add?
Yeah, I'll just add, with everything that Brad was saying about the budget and how the money's actually flowing to us this year versus through per pupil, at the end of the day, nothing seems alarming as far as the way we, we, the budget we just approved. So.
Yeah, I specifically asked the million dollar question, right? And, and the million dollar question is that are, we still project that we're in a good place with regards to our budget, doing it this way versus the other way?
Great. Thank you. Administrative board updates, please, starting with Dr. Latch.
Okay, all positive. Let's see, we're going to start with the fact that our AP pass rate, I already passed this on to the board, but I just wanted to reiterate, is almost 94% for this past school year, meaning the pass rate getting a three, four or five, which is really outstanding. By far our best pass rate in five years. And you could, we have to look at all the other districts, but this is going to be one of the highest pass rates in, in the state of Michigan. So we're excited about that and want to make sure that our AP teachers in particular are getting credit for, you know, they, they put a lot of time and effort into these classes for, for the kids. And we just want to make sure that they're recognized. Let's see. Secondly, we have lots of professional development going on. Carol Diglio and her staff are on boarded over 45 staff members on Monday, which is excellent. Sort of that's the initiation, you know, to what's going on in the district. And it was great, a very diverse group, which was, which was excellent. And then at the end, I had the chance to drive a bus to, with all of them around the district. And with the help of Jackie and Megan and Emily Sickler, who kind of served as the tour guides, we went throughout sort of the, the country. We went down Celine Waterworks, out to Dell, and we drove through the downtown area. They narrated. We went to all the buildings, including the new transportation center. And it really gave a, a great feel of what our, our community's about in our school district. So that, that was a, a nice opportunity. And then we have continued professional development going on. Executive Director of Special Education Volker did a great job today, leading all the special education staff through professional development, along with Assistant Director Monica Ellis, outstanding work there. And then we also have Cara and the Teaching and Learning Team, leading our teacher leaders through professional development tomorrow. And, and I'm probably missing some things because there are so many things going on right now, but this is that big week of professional development for staff as we look to kick off the school year for our staff officially next week on August 21st and then welcome our students on the first day on August 26th. So a lot to be proud of and we're really excited for the start of the school year.
Thank you. I wanted to start by saying, Celine Summer Fest just happened and it was awesome. I know many of us participated in things during that Summer Fest, but I want to drill down to one particular thing that I did and with the help of a lot of other folks. For the first time in my life, I ran a 5K race, couched a 5K four months ago. I was, yeah, to support Celine Cross Country. And I wanted to publicly thank Tran, who's in the audience today, Tran Longmore, who took some amazing photographs. I was scrolling through them and I saw myself there going, starting off, pressing the buttons. And then I scrolled through and the, the speed demons came through and then the slower runners and then the 20, sub 20 minuters and then the sub 30 minutes. And I was saying, aren't I in here, Tran? I know you took my picture. I was ridiculously slow, but for a first race, it was great. And Tran, I know there were a ton of parents and supporters of Celine Cross Country who, who looked... who, uh, who looked forward to those images that you took and they were, you were well positioned, you had some really great shots. Thank you so much for doing that. And will I do it again next year? Yes. Will I go to Chad Tough? Yes. And so even, because it was my very first run, it was also my personal best. It was a horrible, it was my P, I know, I, oh, PB, it was my, it was my, it was my P, personal record, my PB, yeah, yeah. Pardon?
They call it a PR, not a PB.
Personal records, my personal best. It was my...
That's what they call it if you're a runner.
There's another term they use for it as well, but, uh, uh, and it's, I'm, I placed third amongst the male old fogies. Yeah, but there's like 20 minutes between the first and me. Yeah, I'm going to keep doing it until I'm the only person in my age category. So thank you. Okay, okay, quick story. I'm jogging along. I haven't even reached the full mile part and there's the, there's the young whippersnappers coming back around. I'm meeting them and I go, oh my gosh, better, no more walking for me. And, uh, that didn't last long, but it was, uh, it was a great, great morning and anyone else who is out there, thank you so much. And I did also want to say to you all, um, tomorrow is an interesting day for me. Uh, Dawn Wartruba, the CEO of the Michigan Association of School Boards is coming by here in this room. I'm getting a little pat on the back and a little piece of Plexiglas and something else. And if any board members can make it, I know some have already said no, it's at 9:00 AM. Looking forward to, uh, please come by and meet Dawn and, and chit chat with him and, uh, celebrate, uh, I took far too many courses through MASP. Anyway, I'll pass this on to, we'll start at one end, uh, to help Ben. Uh, we'll start with you, Tim, and work our way down the aisle, please, and thank you.
Okay, so like, uh, Steve has been saying, the school has been super busy right now and just driving around, you see all the stuff that's going on in the schools and you think of Rex's anxiety right now as it's building. So anyways, I just want to thank all of you, Carol, the hiring, um, that was a long list and, um, all the professional development. So as I was taking a break a little bit this summer, it didn't look like you guys were. So I appreciate that, all the hard work.
Um, I don't think I have really too many updates, um, because our committees don't typically meet in the summer. I know that, um, we were trying to get things, um, started back. I haven't had time to read it very, um, uh, so we're trying to start back the, um, DEI AC and we're going to have a conversation, um, the committee members, um, with, uh, Ryan Kerr. So that's kind of the only update that I have.
Okay, so I was just going to mention that the, the, um, as the district is very busy, so are the trustees this month. And so, um, as we are, um, you know, dealing with our own jobs and family and all of the things that go along with this time of year, it's been a little tricky to find a, a date for the policy committee to meet, but we do have some items on our agenda and we are going to attempt to meet, um, probably on the 27th. We're just verifying that, um, most of us can be there that day, um, so that we can kind of start to talk about some of the language regarding Title IX that was shared with us, um, from Troon and, um, some proposed, um, changes to the DEIC, just to clarify some of, um, the, the work that's being done there. And, um, potentially, uh, the flag conversation that was added tonight. So, um, that is coming up, hopefully two weeks from tonight. I also, because this is our first meeting, um, since, um, since this occurred, but I know Tim has, um, a 2024 graduate. I had two 2024 graduates. And on that day, I said to my kids, this could be the last time that you're all together. And that was the case. And so I just want to recognize and, um, honor the life of Alex Valenzuela Lara, a 2024 graduate, graduate who passed away in a car accident in July. And so I just thought if we could just take a moment, um, for Alex and his family and his classmates. Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you. I should have brought that up at the very start and I appreciate the reminder. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jenny. Appreciate. I wasn't going to say anything about Summer Fest, but you got my cross-country mama heart beating. So congratulations on the PR, Michael. You can just call it a tempo run. That's, that's the professional language.
It's my bass run.
Um, I also want to call out, uh, former, former trustee and colleague Paul Heineck for his work, uh, uh, with Summer Fest and Stuff the Bus. The bus swung by my house on Friday to pick up lots of post-its and colored pencils and crayons, um, and things like that. So appreciate everyone who donated to Celine Area Social, so, social service. And congratulations to Lizzie White, um, the new Ms. Celine. Today was also, it seems like back to school already. Um, today was a Foundation for Celine Area Schools meeting, so I have lots of dates to update the team with for, um, and community with interesting and fun things that are coming up to support the Foundation for Celine Area Schools. So if I go in order, um, on 9/29, as Michael mentioned, the Chad Tough run is coming up. Um, let's see, October 4th, making sure everyone has that date. I think I've been asked about 20 times when homecoming is. Uh, October 4th is homecoming. Hall of Fame weekend for the foundation is October 11th. Our holiday parade is December 7th. And I know this is forward planning, but, um, we're back at Travis Point Country Club for our winter fundraiser, dueling pianos on February 28th. So if you can reserve the date. I had a lot of fun at Blue Jeans and Bling last year. I have a pretty cool picture of me and Lauren, uh, in our bling, so hoping you can all come. Um, I'm looking forward to, uh, seeing a lot of you at the opening of school next Wednesday. It's always really nice to see all of the staff in one place and watch whatever new hire video is up the sleeves of, uh, HR. Big pressure, Carol. I'm just assuming it's going to be great. Um, and then just personally, I, I really wanted to, um, to briefly, but, um, authentically say a, a very big thank you to our SE, SEA and ESP, um, our Celine educators and our support staff for their continued support of, of my time here on the Board of Education and moving forward. So thank you to them officially.
Yeah, a lot of it is covered, but I want to make sure that I, thank you, Jenny, for, for acknowledging our, our lost student. That, that was quite the tragedy. And, um, I want to thank everyone associated with Stuff the Bus and all the initiatives that have been happening with Summer Fest. That was really exciting. Um, I'm seeing and hearing about a lot of staff who are setting up classrooms and you're back on the fields coaching, you're doing professional developments, you're participating in, um, orientations. Thank you for, for the, the commitment you make every day to, to students and families of Celine. It's what makes our school absolutely extraordinary is the, the people. And having said that, I also wish to, um, give my acknowledgement of the SEA and the SCP, or ESP groups as well for their support of me. Um, it means a lot to me and I'm very appreciative of it. Thank you.
So I'll just briefly answer my own question because I took a second and looked at, um, the definition and mostly answering my own question to, um, thank Laura Washington and the rest of the administrators on the handbook. It looks like at least some of the handbooks, and I didn't look at all, are using the 2014 CDC guide, uh, definition of bullying. Um, the middle school definition was a little bit, uh, different, but there are fairly lengthy definitions of bullying, um, in the handbook. So I think that will be good to reference as we continue to try to address this problem. A few, um, sort of the intersection between both this job and my, uh, other day job. I am grateful to the state for funding, uh, universal school lunches again this year. Uh, new data, uh, showing that, um, it may actually decrease, uh, by a small percentage point, but it's early days BMI, um, in helping us address the childhood obesity epidemic. So, um, that's encouraging new data and, um, you know, I think it'll be really interesting to see where we go with this as a state and as a school district moving forward. So, uh, thank you to the people who, um, vote for this and also for, to the people in our kitchens at school who are feeding a lot more kids. It's near and dear to my heart. Also, uh, on a statewide level, I, uh, just noticed this and I thought I'd highlight for the community, since we were talking about absenteeism, that out of 42 states that released data, Michigan, um, led the United States in recovering from, uh, the school absenteeism. So that's kind of exciting. And I wonder whether, uh, providing food to all kids, uh, is helping. I, I don't know. A last, um, welcome back to the students and to the staff and welcome to our new, um, teaching hires and, uh, support staff hires. I'm glad to have, it looked like a really impressive group of people joining. And I just thought I'd send with, um, Ms. Volker here, a little shout out. For whatever reason, this summer, I have gotten so much great feedback out in the world, uh, in a few different contexts on our, uh, special ed programs. Um, just always continue to be impressed. I hear a lot about special ed. And, uh, I very specifically, even when people don't know my connection to the school district, hear great things about our special education program. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, uh, to authorize the consent agenda as printed. I will not be reading the consent agenda, but we'll seek your approval.
Motion, Gerby.
Gerby?
Support, Miller.
Miller, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, opposed? Great, hearing none, 7-0. Thank you so much. Finally, uh, item scheduled on the next agenda, Dr. Latch?
K-12 Insight Quality Survey Update. Kara Davis.
Super. Will we be meeting the new teachers, the new hires that night or? September 10th? Okay, thank you so much. I'm not suggesting we cancel August meeting. A member of the public may address the board briefly. Do we have any lined up board secretary? Nope, we have nothing. Uh, the next meeting of the Board of Education will be held August 27th, uh, in this room at 6:30 PM. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this Board of Education meeting at 8:07, 8:08.
So moved, East Step?
East Step.
Support, Miller.
Miller, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, everybody. We'll see you in two weeks.